School Board to order. We'll welcome everybody in attendance tonight, thank you for coming out. If we check our microphones now, see if we're all up and running. We will hear each opinion but ultimately act as one. We will speak candidly and courteously to each other and listen to dissenting or different viewpoints with an open mind. We will help each other to depersonalize disagreements. Once we reach a decision or compromise as a board, we will each support the will of the board in word and indeed. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of solace. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the equal rights and rights of all. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Everybody had a chance to look at the agenda? Do we have any amendments we need to make?
I move we approve the agenda.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Ayes have it, motions carried. I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
We will have personnel on the report underneath the session where we go into closed session.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Ayes have it, consent agenda is approved. Citizens' comments? Do we have anyone that is, that would like to speak tonight?
Ms. Mary.
We do.
Excuse me, just for a second, Ms. Hamlet. The Halifax County School Board welcomes and encourages citizen participation in its meetings regarding matters of public concern. To ensure fair and timely participation, the following procedures are observed by the school board. One, all presenters are asked to state their name. Two, each speaker on a matter of public concern is limited to three minutes. Speakers who wish to address private matters may be told they are out of order, asked to be seated, and asked to take the matter through the proper chain of command, immediate supervisor, principal, grievance procedure, et cetera. Three, speakers' comments are limited to a presentation on his or her point of view only. Questions of clarification may be entertained only by board members. Four, all comments are to be directed to the board. Five, debate between a recognized speaker and audience members or between board members and the speaker is not permitted. Six, courtesy between the speaker and audience is expected at all times. Seven, speakers are requested to leave any written statement and/or comments with the clerk of the board. Eight, representatives of organizations who wish to participate in the citizen comment period should, A, submit any written materials and data that the organization would like the board to review, no later than five days prior to the meeting, so it can be included in the board's agenda packet, distributed the week before each regular monthly meeting. And B, limit presentations to five minutes. The school board allows a citizen's comment session lasting no more than thirty minutes at the beginning of each regular meeting, unless the school board elects to extend this period. Priority will be given to those citizens who have signed up to speak prior to the meeting. The board will also attempt to hear a diversity of viewpoints on an issue during this thirty-minute period.
Good afternoon, Dr. Husken, school board members. My name is Mary Hamlet and I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I'm asking that you reconsider the amount that is paid for unused sick days upon retirement. I'm requesting that the amount be changed from twenty-five dollars per day to ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents per day. Several years ago, the rate was one hundred dollars per sick day. It was then decreased to the current amount. As of today, Halifax County daily and hourly rate worker pay scale for 2023 and 2024 states, substitute teachers with high school GEDs are paid eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents per day. Substitute teachers with associate's degrees are paid ninety-three dollars and forty-five cents per day. Substitute teachers with bachelor degree and above are paid ninety-eight dollars and seventy cents per day. After sitting in numerous school board meetings, one of the first statements that's made is, "Let's see what surrounding counties are doing." However, I ask that you do the best for Halifax County. The amount is what would be, the amount is what you would be paying substitute teachers if the regular classroom teacher is not there. We say that attendance is important for our students. This is true. We need certified teachers in front of our students each day to help them become successful. An increase for these days would be an incentive for teachers to be present. Halifax County has a shortage of substitute teachers. This will help to ensure that substitute teachers will not be needed as frequently and students will have a certified teacher present for instructions. Thank you for your time to listen and any consideration that you give would be appreciated.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlet. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak tonight?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like to see if this board can get us a dollar figure from a bookkeeper exactly what that would cost us. We change that from twenty-five to two or three different sizes. Fifty, seventy-five, then eighty, eighty-something you said, or something?
Ninety-eight, seventy.
Ninety-eight, ninety-eight, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, I got it. They heard it, not me. No, I heard it, but anyway, can we get that possible for the next week so we can look at that when the budget comes up?
Sure, I can look right, yes, sir, I can look right into that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buckle.
Yes.
Anyone else wishing to speak tonight? Next is superintendent's comments, Dr. Husken.
All right, good evening, everyone. Things have been more than busy around the school division this past month. Our fall sports teams continue to do very well and we are especially proud of our athletes, but we are more than proud of their, as they compete, we're more than proud of them for being good sports. And the VHSL last spring recognized that we had no ejections and no, no reprimands and we are looking forward to hopefully getting that in our fall sports as well. So we appreciate good sportsmanship. In addition to that, last Friday, we had a hundred and fifty juniors and seniors participate in Manufacturing Day. And I would like, just like to take a few minutes to thank the following local companies. Anon, Gloucester Furniture, Hitachi, Huber, Lewis Metalworks, Novak, Halifax County Biomass, Presto, RTP, TMI, and TMI Auto Tech for hosting our students. They had a hands-on, basically a whole-day experience of experiencing what it really means to work and what life could be like staying here and working for one of those companies. That just, and we could not have done any of that without our local chamber and the local IDA. So that is just our local folks investing in our children and so we are just very grateful for that. And continuing in this CTE mindset, please mark your calendar for next Thursday. That's our CTE showcase and community call to action. If you have not registered yet, please, please register, come out. It's a whole community event to see what our programs are and what's offered, both at our high school and at the higher ed center. We are in great partnership together. So if you've not registered, go to bit.ly/ showcasecte and get registered because you do not want to miss it. So in other exciting news, we just found out we were granted another award, another grant. You guys know if there's a nickel out there, we're going to apply for it and we're going to turn over every single piece to try to find money to support our programming. And we were able to secure another grant to continue to enhance our security and supporting training for our teachers to help our kids in crisis. So we're going to continue to support security staffing with a goal of getting fully staffed in all of our schools. So we could not be more excited about that. So as a side note, I think it's super important for our community to know where we are and the gains that we have made as far as our security measures. And there's no such thing as being safe enough and you guys hear me say that all the time, but we are really working hard on that, on security and safety being an absolute priority in our schools. Those evolved systems, our weapons detection systems are in, all of our elementary schools, our middle school and our high school now. Soon, we'll say that they're in every, every place. They're in our athletic events as people come in. And so just please know that we are trying to, trying to be just as safe as we could possibly be. Our partnerships with our local law enforcement are just growing stronger every day in our communication with everybody. Other districts are calling us to say, "How'd you get there? What are you doing?" And my answer is just simply, we are, nothing else matters if we're not safe. So just please know that, that we are grateful for everyone's support in that. So the next big thing we have coming up is November 28th. Mark your calendar, we are going to be hosting Take Your Legislators to School Day. We're going to be inviting all council members, all of our Richmond folks, all of, all of you guys. Of course, board members, you're going to be getting an invite for that because we want to take folks into our schools and really show people what instruction looks like. What is it that we're doing? Because lots of folks think they know what goes on in our schools and we want to take folks in and say, "This is what teaching and learning really looks like." So mark your calendars for that and they'll be treated to, we have some of our culinary folks here tonight and they are, they'll be catering lunch for us that day. So you'll be in for a special treat if you join us for that day. So we have a lot of great information on the agenda tonight and I think I have certainly said enough. So that's it for now, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Husken. I just want to say thank you to all those who are here tonight and thank you to everybody that's listening, Facebook, YouTube, whatever we got out there. And just thank you for the good work that you all continue to do and we just keep on keeping on. Thank you, thank you, thank you. At this time, I'd like to recognize Ms. Peyton Mary, our new student representative. If she would come forward and give us her comments.
Good afternoon, Chairman Camp, Vice Chair Lloyd, Dr. Husken, and the rest of the school board. The students of Halifax County High School have had an eventful four weeks since I have last spoken to you. On September 27th, the ninth grade students were visited by a career strategies guest speaker. The next day, students went on a career choice field trip which allowed them to learn more about career paths. On September 29th, police officer Jason Butler came to the school to speak about the importance of law enforcement and abiding to the law. Last Friday, colleges from all over Virginia came to visit our high school for College Day, which allowed juniors and seniors to talk and ask questions with college advisors. Our school and, our sports and clubs have also been hard at work representing our school. On October 3rd, our volleyball team hosted a breast cancer awareness pink night game and they raised over seventeen hundred dollars for the local cancer association. Then last Friday, October 6th, the Comet varsity football team also hosted a cancer awareness pink night game and achieved their first home win over Mecklenburg County High School with a score of twenty-one to fourteen. The golf team placed first in the district and special mention to Joel Cunningham for placing tenth in the state on Monday. The boys' cross-country team has achieved three wins in the past four weeks. Our girls' competition cheer team has worked hard to prepare for their season and they have competed in two competitions. Our peer mediation group at the high school has been busy decorating paper leaves with anti-bullying phrases for a tree that will be visible in the hallway. Our Student Council Association has been working hard to plan events for the students, including a pep rally, homecoming activities, and Halloween grams that students can buy and gift to other students. The clubs at the high school have assigned officers and they have meetings underway to plan for the rest of the school year. Despite these triumphs, several concerns have been brought to my attention. Firstly, portion sizes at lunch have become an issue for students are being left hungry after eating such small amounts of food. Students also have been leaving trash in the lunchroom and they are not cleaning up after themselves. Secondly, the snack line prices are concerningly high to some students, for a single cookie costs a dollar. Finally, fighting has become a prevalent issue at the school. Many students do not know how to control their emotions, so they turn to violence. We, as the students, need an outlet for our mental health issues. Oftentimes, students turn to violence or self-harm due to the lack of mental health help at our school. A therapist would benefit the students and staff in more ways than one by guiding students, starting self-help groups, and bettering the environment of our school. Despite these concerns, we have had a great seven weeks of school, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mary.
Good luck on your test, Tom.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. For mentioning Mill Health. I've been talking about it for years, not done enough for it. And I agree with you, that is part of the problem. Because I see the students and I see what's going on when they do have the fights and acting crazy. You know, they act like they have it because it's not just that they just want to fight somebody, they got an issue. I know that from the jump. I know that something's going on and we need somebody over there to talk to them so they can work those issues out without taking them out of return. And I appreciate you really, really doing this because you're the first one done. Okay? I don't remember anybody else talking in here saying anything about it. We need to do something about it. I'm putting it out there now to make sure that we do do something about it. We've had a couple of people, I understand, done it and then they give away. But that's not enough, that's not enough.
Yes, sir, we do have guidance counselors, but the issue with that is they didn't go to school and they don't have the degree.
That's right.
And so that creates limitations to what they can say and what they can help the students with.
That's not for my lips, that's for her lips, as I concur. Our councils are not trained to handle the situation that these kids are going through. So we need somebody else there to help take care of them, make sure they get it. Because a lot of times, they don't get the help until they act out and then they may not get it then. I, I, you just don't, I really appreciate that because it is really a problem over there. Not just at the high school, across the system. The kids are acting out because they got stuff going on. I appreciate you bringing that in, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Potts, thank you, Ms. Mary. Next is nationally certified school nurse, Jessica Foster. Ms. Brizendine, please.
Good evening, Dr. Husken, Chairman Camp, and school board members. It is my privilege to supervise the nursing staff of Halifax County Public Schools. Tonight is just one example of how they go above and beyond for our students. I am pleased to recognize Jessica Foster this evening for completing her national nursing certification. And just a side note, it's a really hard test. Jessica serves as a school nurse at South Boston Elementary School. She is an excellent example of coming full circle. Jessica began her nursing career in labor and delivery and now she's moved to a school nurse career. So she started in labor delivery and now she's caring for elementary-age students. I don't know if she has had any of them that she helped deliver, but I think that would be pretty cool. So to me, that's full circle. When Jessica is not at South Boston Elementary School, she spends time with her husband Jimmy and her children, who accompanied her tonight, Michaela and Jackson. If that doesn't keep her busy enough, like that sounds like a real big full-time job. She enjoys decorating and riding horses and hunting and crafting. Jessica is described by everybody I talk to as being kind and thoughtful and her nurse supervisor said she remains very calm in emergencies. And I think that's a perfect quality for a school nurse. So join me in congratulating Jessica on completing her national certification. Oh, well, this is probably not a good spot, I can hovel, hubble over there. Yeah, we got a hovel. Well, I got a hovel, you don't have a hovel.
Congratulations, Ms. Foster. Thank you. Next is the Hero Award, Dr. Husken.
And if Ms. Crawford would join me? Can I let Ms. Crawford? Ms. Crawford, I'm going to let you tell the story because we had a very, something that could have been a very scary and tragic event happen at one of our schools. And Ms. Crawford, I'm going to give you the honor of recognizing your teaching.
Sure. So good evening, Dr. Husken and Chair and the board. Tonight that we want to, so it was a typical day at lunchtime, like any other day. And our fourth and fifth grade were in there eating lunch and all of a sudden, the fourth graders started to get rowdy and all the, the teachers and the parabros that were in there thought they were just getting rowdy. But it come to find out that we had a student choking on their lunch, literally choking. And she went, and so we would like to recognize Candace Dishman today because she jumped in and ended up giving the Heimlich maneuver and saved this child's life. The child was not be able to breathe or talk and she was starting to turn blue and it's one of those moments that you don't ever want to have at your school. But thankfully, she was aware enough and, and surrounded with the wherewithal and so she jumped into action and, and some other with her and some others' help. They, they had the child safely remove the, the piece that she was choking on. And so we just, one of the fifth graders came up to me afterwards and said, because I was not in the, in the lunchroom at the time, I had stepped out. And they, they said, "Ms. Crawford, do you know that Ms. Dishman saved a child's life today?" And, and when I heard that, it just, it, I called Dr. Husken and I said, "Dr. Husken, we have to do something" because the children even recognized this was a serious situation. And, and Ms. Dishman, if you'll step up. And she really saved a life, so. You just never know when you're going to be in that, in that position to do that, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you for turning something that was, could have been tragic into just, that it was able to get back to just another normal day.
Yes.
Like I said, I'm a mom first and I just hope that it would, it's something that somebody would have done for our kids.
Thank you all.
And she's running off to be a mom now.
Sorry, we got to walk in.
Thank you.
All right, if Ms. Saunders could join me and the, our goodness sakes, I get so excited every time I, I, I see this crowd come up, but I'll let you kind of introduce them.
Good evening. I know, and they look so good with their jackets on tonight. Good evening, Chairman, Board Members, thank you for having us tonight. Tonight, we want to honor our Culinary One group with Chef Victoria Worley. Chef sent me an email a couple months ago and said, "I have an idea, don't shoot me." And I said, "Okay, chef, what's it going to be?" And she said she found this new competition for our students, the Knowledge Bowl. It's part of Family and Consumer Science, FCCLA, and it's in Birmingham, Alabama. And if we make it, we've got to go to Birmingham in November. And you all know how much we love to fundraise. And so I said, "Okay, well, let's give it a shot." So she got two groups together, one from Culinary One, one from Culinary Two. Culinary One won and they are going to Birmingham, Alabama in November for a three-day competition, so. So tonight, we want to honor them, have them come up. This is a huge accomplishment for our students, only forty teams in the entire country get selected. And it was a test that they all had to take. And I'm going to let Chef kind of explain more of it when she comes up, but we're just so proud. So thank you for letting us come tonight. So we have Chef Victoria Worley and then we have Yasmin Ahmed. Come on up, come on up. Sean Fourlines, Mauricio McKee. Oh, Mariko, I'm sorry. Brianna Connor and Nivea Saffio.
Yeah, so Rebecca had that right. These, these kids here, they had been studying, which is kind of hard when you start the school year and you're like, "Hey, guys, we've been seeing the Knowledge Bowl every year when we go to Nationals and we've never even tried." And so I asked my students if there would be anyone who would be willing to try. And these lovely young children wrote over five hundred note cards, studied after school. I mean, they really worked very hard. I was not, you know, expecting our first year, you know, to attack, to make it and not saying that I didn't think they could, but it's hard to, to coach kids how to do something that you've never done before. So I was very proud. They are competing in knowledge on personal finance, consumer rights and responsibilities, including family, career, and community studies. Technology, including fashion and housing design, which again, since we don't have CTE programs and that, these kids are having to study more things other than just culinary arts. Health and safety, including food science, nutrition, and early childhood development. Environment, including hospitality and tourism. So they will be competing November 10th and 11th in Alabama. And if they make top sixteen, they automatically make it to Nationals, which this year is Seattle/Washington. And they are going to have, like, depending on their scores, some backup teams too, just because sometimes kids can't make it to Seattle. So we are very excited that that is a possibility. We have some other kids competing in states this year in Virginia Beach to also try to get to Seattle/Washington. The past several years, our students have placed either first or second in the states and gotten to go, last year, every team that I had competed and won first place. So I'm really confident that they're going to do great, so yay. And Sean Fourlines is our team captain here, so he's, he's really gone above and beyond to, to rile them up and get them excited about this, yes.
Thank you all, thank you, Chef Worley.
Absolutely.
VSB, V H U.
Yes, it's for you guys. All right. So, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes when our school board participates in professional development for your dedication and your time and your hard work for improving your role as being board members through your meetings, your conferences, your board development, and your training, your active involvement in association. So you earn credits through the VSB Academy, which are based in your participation from July 1 through June 30 of each year. There are five levels of awards with certificates and patents awarded for particular levels. The VSB Academy awards are presented annually to school board members who meet the requirements. And so here are the initial awards. So, Mr. Jay Camp is awarded the bronze.
Thank you very much.
And apparently, I get the bronze this year. Mr. Potts, you are a bronze level.
Thank you.
Ms. Shawwell, you are a silver level. Ms. Freely, you are getting an additional award this year. I don't know what level you are. And Ms. Rice, you are also receiving a level. Congratulations to you.
Thank you, Dr. Husken. Under reports, we have the High School Construction Project Update with Mr. Maruska.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Husken, thanks for having me back here once again to give you an update on your project. I have a short presentation for the project update. And immediately following that, I have some slides that I got from Columbia Gas to show you where we're at with our current discussions with them. So, construction progress, September was an extremely wet month for us. It seemed like we would have some good days to put some, compact some soil down on the building pad. And then, we get three inches of rain, then they have to mechanically row it or scarify it to try and dry the material out. And then we get four more inches of rain. So, the farmers in the county got the weather they need. If they could stop giving us the rain dances and give us some good weather, we'd appreciate that. Suffice to say, we're not behind on construction schedule, not as of yet, because what the contractors did, they stepped up and they started working 12-hour days when we did have good weather. And on top of that, we are still beginning footings next week with an additional footing crew. So, going on that, building pad is at subgrade with the underslam aggregate stone. It's already in place and compacted. It's ready to go. We'll begin, we're still installing underground pipe and structures in the peripheral areas of the site. We're finishing up the pond. We actually found a little bit of cost savings there. I'll explain that in a little bit. As I said, piers and footings will begin next week. We met with Mr. Vaughn again to review some special inspection requirements that he had. He has no other requirements for us, so we're good to go there. We also had pre-installation meetings with both the structural and plumbing subcontractors. Make sure all are ducks in a row and everybody's on the same page. No issues with that. As I said, we met with Columbia Gas. I'll get into that after my presentation. And the owner-direct purchase process, we've issued a few more, a couple more purchase orders, but the process is still ongoing. So the final guaranteed maximum price, the update for that, again, the soil on site have been very favorable. We have some site work allowances that were positive, are gonna be coming back to us as savings. We also talked with Halifax County Board of Supervisors, and they agreed to reduce our trade permit costs by 50%, which resulted in a savings of almost $92,000 for us. The final billing GMP, spoke to the chocky and the architect just before this meeting. We're confident we'll have it ready by the end of this month for you. So, building on that, would suggest we hold a working session the last week of October. That's an action item on your new business, on your agenda. The owner-direct purchase update, we issued a purchase order for the generator and ATS that was approved as part of the NEP package that you all approved last month. They believe the lead time of that generator was like 75 weeks. So that's why we had to pull the trigger and get these things ordered now, so we can have it on time for permanent power. Basically, we still have other purchase orders forthcoming for steel, rebar, block, masonry, concrete. All those things are still forthcoming. Tax savings to date so far with this program is just under a quarter million dollars, $224,035.58. Still making progress, still saving money. Every purchase order we cut puts money back in our pockets. Couple of photos, you can see there's the pond, that's nearly complete. On this, if you recall during the site GMP, there was an allowance, or sorry, an allowance, there was an alternate for a synthetic liner that I had spoken to you all about last month. It seems we found some good clay material in the county that we can bring in. And the cost to do that is somewhere hovering around $48,000. But that allowance, that alternate we had, was almost $200,000. So we'll be saving all of that money as well. And here's an overview of the building pad as of midweek last week. You can almost, you can start seeing the shape of it, of the Y right there on the academic side, closest to you, that's gonna be the gymnasium. And what they're putting right there is the auxiliary gym. So here are the slides from Columbia Gas. I'm gonna try and go through them and answer as many questions as I can. So the proposed gas line is a total of 10,250 feet of gas main line. The nearest existing gas line they have, the main that they have, is right there off Greensfolling Road. So that, you follow that yellow line coming all the way down on the old Halifax Road and coming down towards the high school. We might be able to shorten that up a little bit by just cutting, not taking it to the existing high school, but cutting through our job site and heading the mechanical yard where we'd like them to come in at. This project evaluation that they propose here includes the Halifax County High School, middle school, fine arts building, bus shop, concession stand, and field house and maintenance shop. Those, all the loads from all that, those buildings are being considered as part of this price proposal they're presenting here. The gas main will be six inches of plastic, like EPDM, they're, they confirm that they are charging us for a four-inch line, a six-inch they're putting in there with the expectation of the extra load that would need to have that pipe upsized anyways. Columbia Gas will install and maintain all the infrastructure, including the main, service lines, meters, and regulators up to the outlet side of the meter. So everything from their side through the easements, up through town, and right up into the back of the meter, they will maintain all of that for you. This is a chart, it's kind of hard to read, but it's just showing you based on the size of the project and the load they expect from all these buildings, you do qualify for the best rate possible. Is it commercial level three rate, I believe they call it? Total upfront cost, it's called their aid to construction, to be paid by Halifax County Schools, would be $647,292.87. That is what you would have to cut them a check for to get their shovels in the ground. The aid to construction is a result of their NPV, which is, I believe that stands for net positive value evaluation process, which compares their costs versus anticipated revenue. And for your reference, it's there as public information, it's section 420, it's page 424, section B of the Columbia Gas tariff. Again, you can search that out on their website. It is public information. In addition to the ATC agreement, in addition, there would be an ATC agreement, there would be a delayed deposit agreement that would be created. With this agreement, no money is owed upfront. Essentially, what this agreement does is it, you're telling, the Halifax County Public Schools would tell Columbia Gas that Halifax agrees to set those seven meters for the middle school and all those ancillary buildings within three years of Columbia's infrastructure being installed, not from the contract execution date. Attached to the agreement would be a monetary amount to be paid if the terms are not met. So if you don't, if you don't install those seven meters within three years, you would be liable to pay that money, but it did not give us that cost of that, this delayed deposit agreement would be valued at. If the terms are met, are met, and you install all seven of those meters within three years, no money would be owed, the agreement would be satisfied. The delayed deposit amount is owed, the delayed deposit amount owed is determined by the number of meters not set in the specified time of three years. And there is an as per, per meter fee would be assessed when the agreement is written. Continuing, so savings, conversion to natural gas, this is a quick calculator, if anybody wants to go and play around with this specific calculator I have shown here, this link, that oil and propane calculator file at my E Center, that's where you can go and plug in numbers and just play around with it. This is, this is an example that Columbia did. They took the most expensive gas bill from just the middle school for last year. And they plugged the figures into this calculator, and the savings that would come out for that one month would be $1,865 for that one month. That month was January, so that is by far your highest load that you're, of usage for the year. And they also calculated the savings with that month, the average, well, that month, the cost per gallon was $1.63. It fluctuates from what I've seen between $1.40 up to $1.80 during the year. Just depends on what time of year we're talking about. So I tried to break it down, do a little bit of math, and 1,865 times 12 months would be $22,380 savings per year for the middle school. Their $647,292.87, that's their proposal. We can put about $200,000 back towards that because, as I told you before, we have $175,000 allocated for that LP tank farm. But there's also a fence that goes around it. There's also underground plumbing piping that goes from that tank farm to the mechanical yard. And there's also a little bit of aggregate rock and things that, you know, would have to be in the yard that these tanks bulk down to. So, comfortable saying that there'd be $200,000 back at that. That would still leave you with $447,292.87. That's the cost of the line, not including cost to retrofit of the, of the equipment. If you divide that $447,292.87 by the savings per year, you're looking at 19.98 years to recoup the investment. Again, this is not considering the cost it would take for you all to retrofit your existing equipment. It's also not quite, it's not 100% accurate. It's hard to really get there because we don't know what the cost is gonna be, that you're gonna be paying on your new building. We know it's gonna be more energy efficient, and that might sound ambiguous, but it's not, it's not subjective. I mean, that is a fact. Your building will be more efficient than the one you're using now. We know the load, we know the max load of the building, but as far as your usage of it, and when you'll see those max loads and the ebb and flow of that, we can't really, that's hard to nail down. But based on this math, so this math is based on just the middle school, just with them retrofitted, and throwing that $200,000 that we think we can scratch out of the, scratch off the project for the LP tank farm and putting it towards that. So, you would still be looking at, on day one, to put shovels in the ground, writing a check to Columbia Gas for that $447,292. I believe that is the last slide.
I have a question. You said that $647,000, is that $647,000 already incorporated into the amount that we projected paid, or where would that money come from?
That $647, I would propose that it would be $447,292.87 that you would need to find.
And that, those seven meters that you're talking about, do you have like a rough estimate about how much they'd be charging per meter?
I do not, sir. No.
So based on all the savings that we're gonna be getting back, I have already saved $200-some thousand, can go towards that?
If you were, it's an either-or. Either we spend the $175 plus the 25-ish to put the LP tank farm in, or we don't, and we have that 200 that we can throw at this, at the natural gas.
So we still would have to find that $447?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for walking us through it, and thank you for setting up the meeting that you had with them. It was helpful for several of his board members to listen to them explain this as well. If I understand it, what they were saying and what you're saying as well, natural gas is more efficient. The cost is, cost savings is about 50% from what propane is. There's no propane yard, so everything is underground. You don't have to worry about damaged tanks. Excuse me. The gas is on demand. So, there's definite pros to that. I think I need to see a little bit more information before we vote on it. You know, the reduced cost going forward, if we have the funding now, obviously, the current value is a lot better. Paying it now is better than paying it later because of the cost of inflation. But 20 years seems like a long time. So, can we work with finance to get a better cost savings and recoup time? I know we only did it based off of one month for the middle school. If we can take a look at the middle school, the high school, the maintenance yard, at least a couple of the buildings, and get a yearly average, I think that would be a little more beneficial. And then I think we need to see what the cost is. If we only get six of the seven meters, what is it per meter? If we can review that at the next, when meeting in October when we discuss the final GMP, then I think we can make a decision at that point. That would be my recommendation.
Yeah. I had a question about this, and then back to the high school. Yeah, I agree. I'd like to see how long it would take to break even, because this is only considered in the middle school. And my understanding was it was gonna be five, 10 years, or somewhere around there, much shorter than what this is showing.
Right.
Also, do you know how much it is to outfit the middle school? Because I don't see that cost on here.
We do not know how much it's gonna be to outfit, to retrofit the buildings. Yeah. Probably see there that we're gonna look at, probably we're gonna find it there, is it some, I'm not sure how old some of this equipment is, some of the boilers and stuff and kitchen equipment, that's what really uses all the BTUs here. Some of your equipment might be so old, it's hard to even find some of the retrofit parts, and it might be better off for you to buy a new piece of equipment altogether. Those are just some of the nuances that we'd have to work through.
Can we have maintenance help with getting us a quote for the middle school? Because we're gonna have to make sure all those appliances within three years are able to be converted. And I want to know that cost as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Also, going back to the high school, previously, you stated that you're confident that the high school price will be in budget within under $29 million. Are you so confident?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Doing well, thank you.
I have two questions for you. Going back to your high school project, I heard you mention or referenced the trade permit cost, and I think you said that the county had reduced that cost to $91,000. Can you comment on the trade permits? I'm assuming, is that basic building permits? Is that what you're?
Those are the building trade permits, sir. So you have an electrical permit, a plumbing permit, a fire sprinkler permit. Those are the permits that we, that I'm talking about. The actual site permit was not reduced. The shell permit, which is the exterior of the building, that was not reduced either.
So, is it customary in your experience for the counties to charge their school divisions for building permits? That would seem to me not to be the norm.
I understand, I understand where you're going, sir, with the question. Honestly, it's hit and miss around the areas. A lot of the times, if we rule counties, it's waived completely because you're essentially moving money from one pot in the county to the other pot, is how some of them look at it.
Well, that's the way I see it, taking money out of your left pocket and putting it in your right pocket. That's the way it would seem when I'm listening. So, let me rephrase that. So, I know you came from the Mecklenburg project previously. In Mecklenburg County, did you pay for building permits?
I believe, they actually would not waive the entire permit fee. I think ours was somewhere in the high 50s.
Okay.
For everything.
Okay.
And that was for a 177-acre site, $355,000 square foot building.
And I know you wouldn't have answered this, but I was just curious about, you know, other county projects, courthouse or... know, other county projects, you know, courthouse or, you know, whatever it may be, did they also pay for building permits? I just thought that was, seemed odd when I saw that number, seems high to me. So my, my other question would be, and, and I mentioned this for, um, speaking for myself only, but I think it would be helpful as a board member to have the opportunity to come over there one day for a scheduled, um, maybe just a walk-through or walk-around and let us see the site. I get often asked about, you know, different orientations, where will this be, where will that be? And if I had the opportunity to actually come over there with you, maybe walk through it, and I feel like maybe other board members would be interested as well, but to get a better visual, see exactly where everything stands.
Make no mistake, this is y'all's building, this is y'all's job site.
Yeah, is that a?
You are welcome to come by and knock on our door anytime you want.
Well, could you maybe set up, and again, I don't know if everyone else would like to do that, but I would love the opportunity to do that one day soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Vince, the meters, isn't that the responsibility of Columbia Gas?
Yes, sir, it is.
Put the meters in, so we, we wouldn't have to acquire that cost, right?
No, sir, that, that, they will probably charge you a nominal fee for the meters, as they want to do, uh, but setting the actual meters themselves would be on them. Everything coming up, setting the pipe in the ground, coming up out of the ground, and setting that meter and plugging up to that meter, that's Columbia Gas. Anything on this side going from the meter into the building, that would be on us.
And the next thing, I'm gonna go along with Mr. Lloyd, I, I don't understand why the county is charging us a fee when it's still gonna come out the same budget. I, I just, I don't understand why they're charging us for a permit when it's gonna belong to the county. I'm, I'm really confused on that.
That is beyond my, beyond my privilege, sir.
I mean, it's, it's, Halifax County above the schools, I mean, I don't understand why. Maybe we need to look into this a little more, because I just don't understand why they were charging us, what, ninety-one thousand dollars for a permit.
That was the saving.
That was the saving, sir. I believe it.
The actual cost was like one fifty or something, hundred and fifty thousand?
Two hundred.
We submitted a letter. We submitted a letter, and they voted on it unanimously, and they reduced it in half. It was two hundred and thirty thousand.
Maybe we need to go back to it again, and say, look.
They said it was to cover the cost of the man-hours it would take to, to, to do all this permitting. That's, that was their answer.
We're fans of that.
I know, I, I, yeah, we did what they asked us to do, and so.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Boss.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Vince?
Yes, sir.
Can y'all hear me in the back? I like the idea, and I'm glad he brought it up there, because I hate to go in there by myself and get lost, since y'all got it all graded up and it's taller than I am. Are we having spots in the county that are lower now because of that? Because it looks like that's a lot of dirt out there. That is a lot. If you haven't seen it yet, you need to go by it, that's a lot of dirt out there. And I just saw it again sometime this week, and you had raised the level on, on this side. It's taller than going into the building.
Right, when we, when you look at the, what we call a cut fill map of a site, when you see a, a negative ten or a positive twelve on one side of it, you don't realize that that's actually twelve foot of fill.
That's what I was saying, oh, okay, okay.
But to answer your question, sir, this is a, what we call a balanced site. That means that all the, all the material from the cut goes into the fill, and that's it. We don't bring any other material on site unless we absolutely need to, such as the clay that we found for the pond to save money that way, on that synthetic liner.
I've got a question like everybody else about, you know, where do they get the dirt from?
It's sitting there.
I know, but where do they get it from?
Underneath, it's, I was, actually, when we cleared off all the trees, and after they grub all the stumps out, they take, they strip it of the top so low, and that's all of that is what we took out of the bottom of that.
Oh, that's what?
That, mhm.
So you'd have to truck it in, you had to get out of here?
Not a bit.
It's our dirt, it's good dirt.
Real good dirt, when you gotta truck it, because trucking it costs money.
They didn't have to truck it, that's why we're saving the money.
That's good. But that thing, that's all right, I'm just, I'm just amazed how high it is, I'm really.
Um, maybe we can, uh, when we schedule the meeting to discuss the last GMP, maybe we can meet early and do a tour and have that meeting at the high school and knock them both out?
Good idea.
That's fine.
Good idea.
And if you have questions about Columbia Gas, I can certainly invite them to come speak for themselves on their numbers, so you hear it straight in the horse's mouth at that time.
That'd be great, that'd be great, yeah.
One more thing, Vince, could you say if they could put a little water on the town and try to destroy them too?
One time and after drill?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Vince?
Yes, sir.
When you get to writing, could you explain to me, explain to us, maybe us understand it, but me don't, is that, why are they charging us for not getting that done within three years at the, uh, gas company?
Because, I can't answer as to the timeline, why three years is a, is the magic number for them, but I do know that it's not so much of a, it's kind of like a promise or you know, they wanna make sure that, it, I mean, it's not gonna cost them six forty-seven to put this whole line in, it'll cost them more than that. Absolutely it will. And that delta is what's gonna be on that agreement, as far as I understand it.
So what, what we're talking about then is actually having the, the sites in a position for that stuff to be hooked up.
What are we talking about?
That's what they're talking about. We're, we're talking about, when that's, when they get ready to hook that stuff up, the site's gonna be red, or close to red, or something like that. They will need to be putting those in there.
They want, they want that, they want that load being consumed on the line.
Right.
That's how, I mean, that's, if they just come in, put the lines in for us, set, drop the meter in place, and it takes twenty years to retrofit anything, well, they're just, they're losing money, they're bleeding money on that.
A lot, yeah, I understand that. Okay.
If you look at the prices of the oil and the propane, uh, there's tremendous savings there as far as price value, it's almost three dollars a gallon. And propane sometimes goes down. Yeah, that's, that's a pretty good savings.
Thank you, Mr. Mareska, appreciate it. It looks good over there, too. Unbelievable, thank you.
Wait till you see him in person.
Yeah, can't wait. Ms. Franco, Needville Driven Towards Excellence.
All right, good evening, Dr. Huskin, good evening Chairman Camp and other school board members. It's my honor to be the one tonight to showcase Needville. Keeping up with the theme, Driven To Excellence, have you ever driven to Needville? If not, please come when you get a chance. It is a beautiful drive, and it's even better when you reach your destination. Please stand if you are a part of my Needville family. Um, please give these folks a round of applause. They are, they are definitely some of the main reasons that I do what I do each and every day, and they are no doubt the reasons that our students succeed each day. Here's the vision that we voted on this year, investing in tomorrow by encouraging today. This is exactly what we do each and every day. We invest in our kids by encouraging them to be the best that they can be in anything that they do. And our plan from the beginning is to see them, see them for truly who they are, love them for who they are, and then teach them. It was so hard to figure out what to showcase tonight, because there really is so much to see and to do each and every day. I did pick a few highlights, um, that we've kinda started this year that's gone off to a good start. We have our AR reading program that is rocking and rolling. The kids at Needville so far have read five hundred and thirty books. They completed with those books comprehension tests with at least eighty-five percent accuracy during the month of September. That's a huge goal for us, we were super excited. We have monthly goals kinda plugged in, and the kids are working hard for that. We have weekly steam lessons, we rotate it steam into one of our specials, so our kids are loving, loving, loving those Legos and doing those application of those content skills and really getting those hands-on activities. We do have an active SCA this year, we're super excited about that, they are rocking and rolling again. Just recently, we finished our pets' food drive, and some of the dogs from Halifax Dog Squad got to come and receive their dog food, and that was a huge success. We also gave the kids a big ice cream cone party after for participating in that, and they loved that. Um, just by really getting them included and seeing that there's a big community out there, and we're all a part of it. Um, we do have an active PTO this year, we're super excited about that, getting that off the ground and getting that rolling, and we've gotten some things kinda started and moving and shaking, so we're excited about that. Um, definitely not last and not least, but we did, our PTO did fund for us to get a mascot, and he's super busy. Um, we voted on his name, the kids get a big kick out of him, if he shows up in lunch, I mean, it's just the most amazing thing. But his name is Sir Paul, he reads a lot because he reads a lot, um, and he encourages our kids to read a lot. So we're super excited about him, love him, he just drains so much joy, the kids get a kick out of us having, and actually, he arrived, um, the week that we had, the weekend that we had the hurricane. So some of the kids are really convinced that he blew into the hurricane because that's what their crazy principal told them. So we had a big assembly and, and told them that he showed up on our doorstep, and we decided to keep him, and we named him, and we love him. Um, so if you do come to Needville, don't be afraid if you see Sir Paul, he reads a Last but not least, I've given you all the reasons that I love Needville and why it shines each and every day, but here's why our students love Needville.
Oh, oh, yeah, hold that. Where is it?
I am curious. I like to play with people. I like to go to P D. I love to do the book center.
I love to play with my friends.
I like to play with my friends.
I like to play with my school.
I like to play with my toy, my book.
I like to play with my Play-Doh.
I like to read books.
I like to play with my Play-Doh.
I like to play with my Play-Doh.
I like to play with my friend.
I love parks and parks.
I love shopping.
I love St. Louis.
I love St. Louis.
I love St. Louis.
I like reading because the teachers are great.
I like guidance because like it helps you like turn stuff.
I like reading because it gives you art and stuff.
I like reading because my teachers teach.
I like Needville because it's nice and fun.
I like Needville because it's very high quality education.
I like Needville because it is a small school.
I like Needville because there's a lot of fun activities and programs to do.
I like Needville because the activities are very fun, like PE, guidance, art, music, and St. So it's really fun.
I, so, um, I, I like Needville because it's a great school. The teachers, like every teacher here, makes it fun to learn. Uh, Monday, Friday is the best, you get to go to St., um, you go to the gym, they let you, uh, have choices. This is the best place to learn.
I like Needville because we get to learn.
I like Needville because we have specials, all, like all music and library.
I like Needville because we get heart heroes and T-shirts.
I like Needville because we have our own cancer.
I like Needville because we can get stickers for our needs.
I love Needville because we get to do art.
I just think it's a great place.
I like Needville because kids are nice.
I love Needville because we have SCA.
I love Needville because the SCA collects food and toys for our community.
We love Needville for these eleven reasons.
I like Needville because it's a really great school.
I like Needville because you can learn a lot.
I love Needville because it's been the funnest school for last century.
I like Needville because there's a big playground.
I love Needville because it's creative.
I like Needville because we get, go, get to go to STEM.
I like Needville because you can learn a lot.
I love Needville because everyone, I mean, everyone is ready to help.
I love Needville because, uh, I like art.
I love Needville because you get to do a lot of fun activities.
I like Needville because there's lots of fun activities.
I love Needville because I love art.
I love Needville because I like guidance.
I like Needville because there's really nice teachers.
I like Needville because.
I like Needville because I play with my friends.
I love Needville because I like PE.
I love art.
I love lunch.
I love the playgrounds.
I love school because it's fun for kids and fun for teachers.
I love the playgrounds.
I love that.
I love the playgrounds.
And then I have you all a card that our pre-K and second grade babies.
Aww.
Thank you.
My God, thank you, I work so hard to try to keep these elementary students covered. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Franco. Thank you to the kids.
Thank you, Stan.
Next is the instructional strategies with Mrs. Miller.
Well, that's a rather hard act to follow.
Good evening Chairman Camp, Vice Chair Lloyd, all board members, and Dr. Huskin. This evening I just wanna share a few of some of the instructional highlights that we have for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This isn't robust in everything that we're doing, but just some of the new initiatives that we have this year, so we can provide some of that high-quality instruction that young man just spoke about. Um, we're gonna talk about some of the priorities that we have to address achievement in science, English language arts, and mathematics, as well as professional learning for teachers. Um, we first wanna say we appreciate those new science textbooks that you all approved last year. Uh, we've had great feedback from the teachers and students about the activities in there, as well as how well it's aligned to the expectations that we have from the state and SOLs. But in addition to the science textbooks, we were also able to provide science kits this year. And those science kits came out of the work, the summer we had groups of teachers work together, um, with the elementary curriculum with the new science standards that we have in place, and they revised the curriculum and embedded some suggested, uh, hands-on activities that we would have across the whole division, so that we can make sure that we have students learning some of the same things across the schools. And we were able to purchase those materials, and we have science tubs that deliver each nine weeks to each elementary school, so that our young scientists can engage in hands-on learning. And our goal is to add to that each year, so that we can continue to grow this, so that we can have our students continue to do science. And here you see some pictures of some of our fifth grade students and one of the first grade kits that we supplied for the first nine weeks. In addition to science, we have a lot of big changes coming with English and language arts, um, so that we can diligently grow our strong readers here in Halifax. Um, the General Assembly passed the Virginia Literacy Act, which is a multi-year effort to improve literacy outcomes for our students. It focuses on literacy instruction for students in kindergarten through eighth grade, and it calls for our teachers to work towards using an evidence-based literacy curriculum. Luckily, our current curriculum that we have for the elementary Luckily, our current curriculum that we have for the elementary has passed the initial stages of the approval process, and we are waiting on more information as the video continues to look at our resources. In addition to that, the VDOE has definitely made plans to aggressively approach literacy, so they are accelerating the approval of new standards, and they expect it to approve new standards in the next few months that we would have to implement next year. So our students and teachers will have a lot of great changes, but hopefully, they are all for the benefit for us to grow strong readers in our community. In addition to new English standards, our students and teachers will also have new math standards to learn and teach. So in August of '31 this year, the VDOE approved new math standards that will be fully implemented next school year. They have provided us with various resources that we're going to share with teachers, but we also have our elementary math specialists who have attended conferences and are working on plans to provide support to our teachers on how to implement them going forward. And that will include some adjustments to the second semester, so we can build in any gaps that our, that the upcoming standards have that our new standards may not cover. So as you can see, our students, teachers, all of our educators, we're going to be rocking and rolling because of the various changes that are coming our way. In addition to the history, math, and English standards, we'll also have new history standards to implement next year as well. With these changes requires professional learning, so that we can continue to grow not only our students, but our educators that we have here in Halifax County. So at the, we already have secondary meetings where we have our middle school and high school content areas teachers get together, but we're going to bring back our division-wide grade-level meetings to support professional learning communities from school to school and allow for more collaboration. This is especially beneficial for those small elementary schools where they may only have one fifth-grade teacher to talk with him or herself. So now they can collaborate, which they already do unofficially, but they can collaborate in a formal setting so that we can continue to grow and learn from each other. In addition to that, we don't want to wait just till next year. We've been, you know, working hard in the past few years to make sure that we address the Virginia Literacy Act. So we have began to embed the Value Series that is created by the Virginia Literacy Partnership at University of Virginia. So each month, our instructional coaches facilitate professional learning within our grade-level meetings at each school to help prepare our teachers for the Virginia Literacy Act requirements that will be updated in the new English standards. And they will soon be creating more of that training to address pre-kindergarten and middle-school English teachers with that training as well. And literacy is a, is a big thing. That was written with the General Assembly with the Virginia Literacy Act. So in addition to the Value Series, we also have a cohort of teachers that are taking letters, which is the language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. A few years ago, our instructional coaches, they participated in this intense training, and we currently have a cohort that began last January, and our goal is to begin another cohort this fall or winter, so that we can have more teachers that have the support to implement the Virginia Literacy Act and the science of reading. And last but not least, again, these are just a snippet of the things we're doing. Another initiative that we are very proud of is establishing a cohort for provisionally-licensed special education teachers. This is so that we can have more fully-certified teachers who can support some of our most vulnerable learners. This is a partnership that we are working with Longwood University, and we have teachers at the elementary, middle, and high school level that are participating in this. And at the conclusion of this with successful completion, they will also earn a master's degree. So this will allow them to work with all students in all content areas in all grade levels, so that we can continue to support our students in the way that they need to be supported. So again, this is just a snippet of the expectations that we have for our students and teachers, and we thank you for the support of all these initiatives and others to help grow our students and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions from the board? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Brown, truancy report.
Good evening, Dr. Huskin and board. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'd like to welcome everybody here and everybody that's, you know, here with on social media. Going to start off, just a little bit of an attendance report. Down at the bottom there, you see two banners. That's the banner for this year's 2023 Attendance Awareness Campaign that's nationally. It's showing up together for everybody in the community. We're all showing up together. That's teachers, that's students, that's parents, that's doctors, it's construction workers, police officers. You know, we're all in this together to get our students in class. School attendance matters all day, every day. Reducing chronic absenteeism is a springboard for academic success. And here, we're going to unpack some school attendance terms, just so that we get a little bit of understanding. If there's any questions, please let me know. Average daily attendance is the percentage of students enrolled who attend school each day. It can be also used in some states for funding. That's percentages of students in the class each day or for a certain time period. And I would like to note, because I do like to make, you know, announcements, that the division-wide for so far this year, we had not, we have had 92.88% of our students in class. 96% was in attendance today at the middle school, so that's, that's very good. And at Meadville, today, there were 96.82% of students in class. Sydney Jennings had 94.27% of students in class. And then a yearly rate, and I'll get more into this later on, but Dr. Huskin has, has had a challenge for all of our schools for PIA since the 18th of September. And right now, Scottsburg Elementary is 94.11% for the 23-24 school year. South Boston Elementary, 94.04%, and Meadville, 93.93%. So those are all very good rates, and to keep that up. Going back to the unpacking the attendance terms, truancy refers to only unexcused absences and is defined as students' failure to attend school not approved by parents and the parents' failure to enforce attendance to the code to attend for Virginia 22.1-254. Chronic absence, which is CA, which is missing 10% or more of school for any reason, excused, unexcused suspensions, or et cetera. Chronic absent is also an indicator that a student is academically at risk due to missing two months' school, starting as early as in kindergarten. Moving to action requires knowing if a CA is a problem. Tracking daily attendance, truancy, suspensions, and unexcused absences can all mask chronic absent issues. The fact is that too many students miss school across the nation and fall behind due to missing school even excused. As a nation and as a division, when it's broadcasted in multiple ways, the importance of attendance, it, it broadens the impact of the, you know, being in school on a more regular basis. And I'm going to go to some school attendance dynamics on the next page. Before the pandemic, about nine million students across the United States were considered chronically absent from school. Research from the organization Attendance Work shows that during the spring of 2022, that number has increased to 16 million students. That's quite a bit of an increase. Those dynamics have changed school attendance a great deal in the past few years, but the most important thing is to stimulate growth, you know, with the switch for more supportive and less punitive ways of improving attendance, better supports those absences. Next slide. What we're doing. If you've been around any of the elementary schools, the middle school, the high school, you've seen there are signs everywhere about attendance, again, showing up together. Two absences per month times nine months of school equals less likely to graduate from high school. So that's just, you know, a, a, a topic, or it could be, you know, something that really emphasizes the attendance. We are doing incentives. We have bracelets that went out at the beginning of the school year, and then also for the rest of the school year, there'll be incentives. We did do water bottles last year for the high school for those, and also at the middle school that had the most improved attendance or best attendance up until November. Next slide. Attendance Matters. Students who attend school regularly achieve higher scores than students who don't attend. Regular attendance and punctuality are important life skills. By sixth grade, chronic absent becomes a leading indicator that a student will drop out of school. Missing just two days a month for nine months means missing 18 days. Let me say that again. Missing just two days a month for nine months means missing 18 days, which is 10% of the school year. There's no time like the present, and there's no substitute for being present in school. And then here, strive for five. Strive for five is something that was, you know, kind of started with elementary and around to emphasize the importance of five days of attendance each school week, and then also five days or less of missed days for the year. In our current, right now, we have 91% of our students have only missed zero to five days of school. That's total days of school, and 9% have missed five or more missed days of school. School attendance is the most crucial prerequisite for quality education. Students cannot learn if they're not in school. I've got a little bit of an experience here that I kind of want to explain. This is the iceberg effect, which I use a lot when I go through and I'm, you know, going through different things in my job. I was kind of brought to my attention as a tool, but I use this a lot of times as the, you know, things that are on the top, you can see, but the things at the bottom down there are things that usually come out later in the process, you know, home visits, court, different things such as that, meetings. And then there's an experience here that I just kind of want to go over that, you know, kind of puts a little bit of perspective about how things, you know, happen as far as with attendance and with parents and a lot of things that, you know, go on. Above the water, you know, is what we can see, but down there underneath, that's what's going on that's causing all the other attendance issues. Myths. There's a lot of myths, you know, with attendance about, you know, things that cause, you know, different things with attendance. Adversion, students, you know, not wanting to go to school, parents, you know, that sort of thing. Next. Barriers. There's a lot of barriers that cause attendance issues throughout the school and throughout the nation. Absences are only an issue if they're unexcused. That's a myth, but that's, that's not true. Next. Sporadic versus consecutive absence aren't a problem. All absences are a problem. Attendance only matters in the older grades. That's not true. They matter all the time. School attendance matters all day, every day. Lack of access to health care, that, that's, that's a barrier. That's a barrier that, you know, is dealt with. Poor transportation, a lot of transportation issues, you know, that come about. But all of these things are things that kind of come into the perspective about, you know, trying to focus on what the goal is and, you know, driven towards excellence. And if you can see right there in the middle, the excellence or what we're trying to, you know, reach is success is graduation. Next. No safe path to school. Next. Child struggling academically, sometimes that's an issue. Next. Lack of engaging instruction. You know, sometimes that, that can be a barrier, that can be something that comes about with, you know, school attendance. Poor school climate and ineffective discipline, these are all issues that, you know, cause attendance issues, you know, across the nation. Next. Parents having a negative school experience, you know, that can be an issue with, you know, why there might be an attendance issue. Poverty. Poverty is, is a, is a big thing that, you know, sometimes comes about with school attendance. Mental health, that, that also comes about with, you know, a lot of issues that, you know, you're dealing with myths and barriers and aversions to school attendance. Bullying. Bullying is a big issue, you know, sometimes with attendance that I've had to talk to parents about, you know, the, the kids are, you know, going through bullying at school, you know, work with the schools to try to resolve the issues. I've even gone, I personally, myself, and talked to students, you know, at the homes about situations with bullying and parents to, to help. Caring for siblings could be that they're at home trying to take care of a grandmother, or they could be taking care of, of a younger child that, that, you know, that they're having a hard time getting childcare for. Trauma. Could be trauma that's causing the attendance issues. Next. Parenting skills. Sometimes those also are issues that, you know, court-related issues, they come about, and then their services, you know, they get initiated for parenting. So these are all things. School phobia, don't want to go to the building, you know, anxiety, those kind of things. Abuse, neglect, those are all, you know, issues that engagement, you know, are we engaging the families? Do they have the fuel that they need, you know, to put their, put their foot on the pedal to work towards that goal for driven to excellence? Single parents, sometimes they're the only single parent, you know, trying to do all of this that's in front of them. Neighborhood safety, sometimes, you know, comes about across the nation. Homelessness, those are all, these are all issues that I've, that I've come across, but the most important thing is to provide support. It's, it's, it's trying to be human with them to figure out what's going on, and as you, you look, some of these are taken away. And as they're taken away, it's a lot more of a perspective that they've got their hands on the wheel and they're driving towards excellence, you know, to try to dodge everything that's coming at them, you know, in their life. And school attendance matters all day, every day. These are some attendance trends, and I've gone through and done some data studies with where we are in August and September and October with their attendance. These are all the PIA scores for each individual school. And if you look at August, the, the one in the middle is actually the 23-24 school year, and then all the others are 22, 23, and 21, 22. The reason why I put up 21, 22 is because that was right when we got back, you know, from being out for COVID. You know, there were still some, you know, unexcused absences, there's still excused absences, you know, COVID. I've done a study on a lot of information and, you know, probably talked for a couple hours about attendance data, but looking at September, that's where we are with September, and then October. And as you can see, in October, there was an improvement, you know, from last year to this year for Clay's Mill, from Meadville, for Scottsburg, and for South Boston Elementary for those, those, those studies. And something that I looked into for last year, 23% of our days were actually missed total absences on Fridays. And then this year, right now, 25% of those days were missed on Friday so far this year. Next slide. This is our PIA trend for the last five years, and if you can see that rate down at the bottom down there, that actually is 21, 22, and then 20, 23, and then 23, 24 is right in the middle. So that's, you know, pretty much, it kind of mimics the data from 1920, except for just the, the drop there for the high school. But when, you know, I've participated and I've viewed and I've, you know, looked at different webinars, you know, with everything that was being, we've been going through with, you know, chronic absenteeism and return from after COVID, it's going to probably take, and it can take three years, you know, for things to kind of get back to normal. But this data itself shows that we're making improvements, you know, with attendance. And looking down here at the bottom is present days, you know, as of last year versus this year's data, we've had 147, 224.98 present days this year, whereas last year at this time, it was 126, I want to say it was 950. That's the, the block there, right there beside in the total, excuse me, present days. But then this is our total absences over on the left here, and that's just kind of where we are now. And then our unexcused absences are over here on the right side and kind of how that affects the present days and the, and the total absences. And then the last one is the one I'm the most proud about, and Dr. Huskin is, is kind of, you know, an issue. the one I'm the most proud about, and Dr. Huskin is, is kind of, you know, initiated the challenge that we've got for our schools. But the PIA challenge we have for our schools is, you know, Sanya is ninety-one oh three, and then Scottsburg is a ninety-four point forty-eight. You know, so that right now is from the eighteenth of September to the last date, which was the tenth for the absences. So, you know, their PIA score is, is doing really good. And then for the entire school year, from eight-twenty-one to ten-eleven, which was yesterday, there's kind of some numbers. You know, Scottsburg Elementary is ninety-four point twelve. Meadville is a ninety-three point eighty-five. You know, so there's been improvements made with attendance. But, you know, just the strive for five, just emphasizing regular attendance, five days a week, you know, could do a great deal to help support, you know, having attendance, you know, from Monday through Friday, and then there's a drop off on Friday. You know, twenty-five, like I said, twenty-five percent of our days, I've done a calculation for all Fridays last year and this year, and also Mondays, twenty-five percent of them, you know, are total absences are on Friday. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Camp, I, I don't have any questions. I just want to say thank you for doing all this for us this evening. I, I know that's a difficult job, and I know that your job is very difficult. So I appreciate your time and your effort and the time and the effort for the, the students and the teachers and the principals who are, are doing, doing everything they can to keep our children in school.
Yes, sir.
Question.
Yes, sir.
This question may not be for you, but maybe it's my superintendent. We had three schools that got kicked in the head last year about attendance. Our present scores on the same trend they were on last year, or they better?
They're better.
They're better.
They're better. Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Will we get possible accreditation with them this year, or whenever they look at it again, or what?
It's too early. It's too early to tell. I mean, the projections is we're, we're better than we were last year, and the, the charts actually show that. You know, the most important thing is, is just emphasizing the importance of regular attendance and not be defensive about, you know, certain things and, well, my, my child's sick, but they're also missing this many days of school. You know, so I go out to try to, you know, find that because of the school's concern, you know, for them missing school. You know, when we go out there, well, you know, let's, let's try to talk to the doctor. Let's try to resolve something with what's going on, maybe homebound, you know, or they just need somebody to talk to. I've, you know, many times gone out to homes and the parents have called me and they said, "Mr. Brown, can you just come talk to them?" Sure. You know, and you go out and you build a rapport, you build a relationship with them, and you're, you know, you're supporting them, hoping, you know, to emphasize showing up together, you know, for regular attendance. It works. It works. It's, it's, you know, boots on the ground. You know, our schools are doing what they need to do, but there is improvement.
My second question deals with, are you brought up something about homelessness?
Mm-hmm.
What's the percentage of kids you talk to that are going through that?
That I don't, that I don't have. That, that would be, you know, something from more for our homeless coordinator. I don't have that information.
We have a homeless coordinator?
Mm-hmm.
It's part of what Ms. Bruce does. She, she calculates that. And it, that, the broad definition for homeless can be if, when families are doubled up together, that qualifies under the federal definition of, of homeless. So...
That's where I know family gonna belong at. So, can we have those figures? Because if we, if we got that kind of problem, I think it's not just, see, there's nothing we can do about that, except find out about it. But if we get those figures and present those figures to the board supervisors, then maybe they can do something about it. That is an issue. And we always send somebody miraculously living in the car for all this time, and they get this job and bam, there they go. But that ain't happening in Halifax. So I'm, I'm interested in seeing that. I would appreciate if Ms. Bruce could have a report for us by next week so we can see that, so we can make, make the board supervisors aware. Because that, if that's a problem for us in school, that's a problem for us in the county.
And sometimes people are very private about that. It can be going on, and people are just private about it, and they won't share that until they do end up being chronically absent. Maybe they are ten, twelve, fourteen days, and then we go to uncover it, and that's when you discover that it hap, you know, we would love to be on the front end. We would love to be on the preventive end. But again, family, family business is often family business. People are very private.
So what is the percentage of, of what we have to have in absenteeism for, for us to get the decline we got last year? What's, what's that percentage?
Well, I mean, it was, it had to be ten percent of the children missing, was it ten percent? It was calculated fifteen percent of the children missing ten percent of school.
Ten? Say that again?
Fifteen percent of our children missing ten percent of school.
And it, ten percent is eighteen days. It can be eighteen days excused, unexcused, suspensions. Eighteen days is eighteen.
That's one of that two days, two days.
Two days. Two days every month for nine months is eighteen days. And...
It should take long to get to eighteen days.
No. And what I have found, board, is when I've gone and made contact and I've questioned the parents, they tell me, "Oh, they've only missed a couple of days." That's not accurate because here it is right here. This is how many days they've missed. And then it's like, oh, okay. You know, so then they understand.
You wouldn't have to know why they're gone all the time on Friday because I'm, I'm guessing why, but do you have to know why?
No, I don't. I just, the data study that I did just showed that twenty-five percent of the days on Friday were, were missed, total absences was on Friday.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. You said majority of, a lot of absences occur on Fridays. Do they reoccur from the same individuals or different individuals?
Just across the board. Just, you know, every school, all the schools that I did a data study, and I pulled all the data Mondays and Fridays. I even did during the week. You know, most of them are on Mondays and Fridays.
Take, take me through the normal process or procedure that, when do you actually get involved when someone is chronic absent from school? When is you actually contacted and say, "Hey, we have an issue with a child?"
Now, chronic absence can be under a lot of different things. It can be excused, unexcused. It can be, you know, a student misses ten days of suspensions, and then if they miss eight more days, then they'd be chronically absent. But, you know, the most important thing that I've been, you know, to do is to intervene with the schools in a more proactive rather than a reactive way. You know, with, with the truancy piece, you know, those things are after students miss five days of unexcused absence, you know, if the school has done what they need to do to emphasize or to make that contact and they've been unable to, they let me know. I go out, make an effort, you know, make home visits. If that doesn't work, we're going to have, you know, meetings, you know, and that sort of thing. The IRT can also get involved with, you know, court-related things prior to or thereafter, if they see the fit for that to be done. And then after seven unexcused absences, if all contact has been made, I've issued compulsory attendance code. After seven unexcused absences, you know, initiation can be done for a chin's or it can be done for charges for violation of compulsory attendance according to Code twenty-two point one dash two fifty-four of the Virginia Code.
Now, you said that on five days, the five days is when you, you would start the process or something?
Yes.
Is there any way that we could start the process before five days?
Well, it, it, you know, it can be started at three to five, you know, fi, three to five days unexcused. But five days is, is when I usually get word, or if they haven't been able to do, you know, or the school's concerned, they'll let me know and I'll go out, you know, make home visits, schedule meetings and that sort of thing, you know, after five days. Because four thousand six hundred and some students is quite a few students.
I, I guess my point of, what I'm trying to get to is that during this time period, you can be on vacation or in training or something when, when the clock start ticking.
Correct.
I guess another thing that bring to my attention is that I think you're doing a great job. But I'm trying to figure out, how can you do so much by yourself if you're just a one-person department? And you have over four, four hundred kids in this county? And, and we want to talk about chronic absence. You know, seem like that we need to try to get some more people involved here and, and divide them up in different section of school divisions to be responsible for two or three schools instead of you being responsible for all nine schools. Because I think that's kind of impossible for you to cover all this territory and cover schools and, and all this stuff. Because seem like to me, seem like you spend a lot of your time just getting data together, which you presented to us tonight. Because that take a little time to get all that information stuff together. So it look like to me that you, you need some more help. And, and the reason why I'm saying is, is that if, if, if the state going to continue to have some influence upon the school districts across the state because of chronic absence, I think that's something that school division need to take very, very seriously and get some more boots on the ground. Like you said earlier, we need to get some more boots on the ground and find out what's going on. Get in these homes and see what's going on. We need more people on the ground to see what's going on. One person just ain't going to cut it. That's just in my opinion. Because this seem like a very serious problem here. Because I know there's a lot of things that kids experiencing going through on a daily basis, and I think we just need some more people on the ground. But let's keep up the great work. I appreciate what you do.
Again, that experience kind of shows a little bit about that of everything that's kind of thrown in front of them. But that data I actually compiled on last week while I was working to get ready for seven cases on Wednesday. So, so I enjoy that. So...
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
I have a question. How long have you been doing this?
This was my seventh year.
So this was pre-COVID, right? How, how was this before COVID? How was this during COVID, if you, I know this is very technical. And how was it caused the problem that we had?
Right. Well, Mr. Potts, you know, COVID and the pandemic changed school attendance drastically. It, it changed it drastically, and it made to an extent, I hope it gets back to, you know, to, to normal. But as I, I speak to a lot of people about attendance, and it was, I think it was in court one day, and I said, "You know what? I've seen it at the best, and I've seen it at the worst." Because prior to, we had, you know, eight and ten percent, you know, improved PIA scores and drops in total absences prior to COVID when I, when I was here. But again, I've seen it at the worst, and I've seen it at the best, you know, that we've been going through here recently. So...
The reason I ask that because it kind of makes sense, makes sense to me to look at the past, see what's going on in the future. Because you learn from that. And what it makes sense to me also about that people are saying, well, that COVID did that because what we did, we got lax days ago about attendance, which we're supposed to do because we weren't at school. So we can't even count those three years, you know. But all of a sudden, now we got to count this year and next year and all that, and then they, then they go come and, and punish us, and that's the correct word to punish us, because we didn't cause that. COVID caused that. Because you just said that we were doing okay before COVID. We went bad during COVID, and what has happened, this is the re, remnants of COVID. And we need to understand that, but it is apparently that the state doesn't understand that. Because we just noticed it, but, you know, now we noticed it. You made it aware. I guess you make us more available to understand what's going on when you said you don't have a school full of your credit. See, and that's, that's, that's their way of telling us that we're not doing what we're supposed to be. But it's not our fault. It's not our fault that we had kids, well, before this, I'm gonna say, that's right, over at your school.
That was last year, yes, sir.
Yeah. Before, there wasn't COVID last year.
Well...
But, but the, but the atmosphere we set for that during COVID made that take place. That's what happened. Everybody said, well, that's, that's what happened. But then we getting punished about it. So keep on doing what you're doing. I just want, I just want to throw that out there. But I, I appreciate what you're doing. But I wanted to know what it was like in, before COVID, during COVID, and since then. And I appreciate you being able to bring this to us and come up with a plan, you know. Because it's obvious to me that the state gonna come at us. Unless we, not that we come up with a plan, but we got to get, get this down. Because if they don't, they gonna cut money and all that crazy stuff. But I appreciate it. I would like to thank you.
Roy Key.
Ted. Mr. Brown, thank you again. Going to chime in a little bit on what Mr. Potts said, and I'll, and I'll be really brief. I, I would say it would be foolish of us sitting up here on board to think that when we basically lock students out of the building for twelve months plus, that that would have adverse effects, I mean, all the way across the board. I mean, we, we prevented people from bringing their children to school. And, you know, at that point, to think it wouldn't affect them academically, it wouldn't create bad attendance habits, I mean, all across the board. I mean, any one person could look at that prior to those decisions that we made and project this. I mean, I, I don't know why, I don't know why any of us are surprised at this point that those are some of the consequences that are coming from all of those decisions a few years ago, excuse me, a few years ago. So, I mean, I just think that's, you know, I think we all have to recognize that these are, this is going to be a struggle for years. It's not, it's not going to be something that we overcome today, tomorrow, next year. I mean, it's something that, it's going to take a while to reverse that. I mean, if not, I would question the job that we're doing daily. If, if it didn't have a, a long-lasting effect on the students, then, then what are we doing? Obviously, it's going to have an effect. I mean, I believe that we do good work. And when I say we, I mean mainly the people that are inside the buildings. They do good work. And if you take that away from a child, then obviously it's going to have a long-lasting effect. So, I mean, I compliment you on what you're doing because I do think that you have a, you're going to have a difficult task to walk all of that back. And I think it will be, you know, it'll have to be gradual. So thank you for that.
Mr. Camp, I have a second question. Mr. Brown, Mr. Edmonds had said a couple of things that kind of triggered something in my head to ask you. Can you just kind of give us a, a small explanation as to the length of time that it takes to get a case before a judge for truancy, and then what happens once that case gets there?
Do we have a chat?
Do we? I just, I said, I just, I, just a little, a little snippet. I mean, you know, what, once the, once you are, you get to court, you know, what, I mean, what, what is the, what ultimately happens, you know, with, with the situation usually?
I'm not going to go into specifics or anything such as that, but I'll just generalize it that, you know, again, after I talked with Ms. Ed, Mr. Edmonds, you know, about the five days and then the, you know, seven days, and then initiating improvement, and then if they continue or they miss two days after, you know, then there can be, you know, a chin's filed. There's also can be violations of compulsory attendance. There can be, you know, charges filed for failure to have a child enrolled in school. You know, all of those things, when court gets involved, it can be, you know, a month out for a hearing. Once the hearing is, is set, it can be a month out for the next hearing. So, you know, when we go to court, information is presented on the contacts that I've made, the attempts I've made at home visits, all those different things, meetings, what's been a result of the IRT team or the heart review team, what we've done, you know, prior to, so that, you know, when we get to court, they have recommendations that need to be made, and then they can be made accordingly to the case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
It's a tough job you have.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Next is Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax, Dr. Huskin.
And I'm going to invite Dr. Buckman to join. Good evening, board members and everyone here and everyone that is watching online. I know that... Good evening, board members and everyone here and everyone that is watching online. I know that uh, folks have been interested in what is this? Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax. And I'm going to begin with, this program is an add-on to our compensation plan. This is not an addition to, this is not a replacement of. This is an add-on retention and longevity plan that we are looking to build and grow and uh, create some incentives and bring back some things that were formerly here and enhance um, some additional benefits on top of regular compensation and steps and all the things that we are already doing. So I just want to be crystal clear from the start that this is not a replacement of. This is an enhancement to a um, a standard compensation plan. So I just wanna start tonight by um, Dr. Bucklue and I are going to flesh out where we are right now with the um, Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax longevity plan. And um, it started this summer as we were trying to decide items about the budget and where we were going and and where things were gonna go. Um, it really started as the idea came from a plan that the Virginia State Police have. And they have an additional longevity plan, and we thought, well, you know what, we could model that and add some, some pieces to it. And then um, we also have found that this is actually part of the governor's strategic plan. He has actually charged us to come up with a longevity, a retention, um, and remove some barriers for helping grow teachers and grow the profession and do some programming and things to recruit, support, and retain highly qualified educators. So it's part of the state's plan and we need to, as y'all say around here and as we say around here, Halifax it up. So that's um, that's what we're gonna talk about this evening. So, here is the the basics of what it's going to look like. At year five, ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, and thirty, employees will get above and beyond an additional supplement, which will count towards your VRS. But it will be an additional, just a bonus, if you will, at these years. And it's separate from whatever the board decides the budget, you know, standard step is for that year or whatever your standard compensation is. This will be an additional thank you, basically. A thank you for staying with Halifax and continuing your years of time consecutive years. This is a longevity bonus. If you are already at year thirty, whenever, what, say we implement this next year, anyone that is at year thirty or beyond will get a, get a one-time, you know, a one-time forty-five hundred dollars. In addition to that, we are, we want to start picking up some of those things that, they're not always all that expensive. Um, but we know that, you know, teachers take classes and we've got people that are not licensed and we are, we're just gonna tell the truth. We are in a pretty serious situation where we've got to get people licensed. And we need highly qualified licensed teachers in front of our children, and we need to help people get there. And we need to get them there quickly. So we need to bring back tuition reimbursement. And we're, we're in a place where it really should already have been. And why that's not already part of our budget, we need to put some money, put some, basically put some money towards that. Um, so we want to start out and that may be a dollar that needs to, dollar amount that needs to grow. But we want to start out adding some money back into tuition reimbursement. We want to start paying for people to get their license. Most divisions do that. If you're up for renewal, we should pay for you to to get your license renewed. It's not, again, it's not a lot of money, but it's just a thank you. Um, thank you for for being here and we'll pay to get your license. Um, it's a hassle to have, when you get hired, to have to go down to the sheriff's department, get fingerprinted, get your, pay for your own background check. We need to cover that. So these, these are just little small things that we need to um, add in and start covering that. And then, as Ms. Miller referenced earlier, professional development, we've got to, with, you all saw all the new initiatives that are coming. Well, those are not gonna stop. There's always initiatives. We need to start, you know, returning people to conferences. Go get that information, come back, share it with other people, and we need highly trained people in front of our children. So, that's um, that's the the first piece, so. Um, we thought it would be, and again, thank you, Ms. Shawwell, for this idea, just a quick snapshot of where our um, what our current things are. And I'll let Dr. Bucklue kind of talk about that.
So currently, full-time employees that are VRS eligible and health insurance eligible, they are on the left-hand side of your screen. Can't quite see it for the fire alarm, but it says current benefits for employees. So um, all of those employees get health insurance options, uh, VRS, disability insurance paid for by us at Halifax County Public Schools. Everyone has a state group life insurance policy, which is an accident insurance policy, uh, should they lose their life in an accident. Um, workers' compensation insurance, social security and Medicare, accrued leave. Um, and we also pay the substitutes in their absence, so that is also a benefit. Um, on the right-hand side of the screen, we have our Stay With Halifax Plan benefits. So you would have all the same benefits plus tuition reimbursement added. Praxis exam, when you take that, we will reimburse you the fee. Um, funded professional development, not out of your pocket, out of ours, because we want you to grow with us. Um, longevity, longevity supplement, which Dr. Huskin went over, and of course, license renewal. So those are the added benefits that we are um, wanting to add for the employees moving forward.
I have a question. The letter that I wrote says, um, about reimbursement for taking
The praxis.
Praxis, that what?
Praxis exam.
That's passing it too, right?
They have to pass it. That's correct. It's not just if they took it, they would have to pass it.
You gotta pass it, so they're gonna get you fifty bucks.
That is correct.
And some of those exams are expensive, so.
Yeah.
Um, where this money would come from, because that's always very important for the next, uh, again, because ESER has been extended, so some of these funds would come from our ESER three. The Title II grant, that's a federal grant, that does, the design of Title II is to support professional development. So um, some of the, the writing of our Title II would be shifted to be written to support the professional development um, piece. And then, um, again, some from operating funds, there are other grants out there, and then, again, we are in the middle of an overall efficiency study. So you'll see, um, we're gonna break the actual, um, where the line items will come from and overall cost savings as we continue to move through this. So, again, and let me also be clear, this, this plan is for all employee groups. We just have have mined the data for teachers because we have that data available to us electronically. But I just want to be really clear. Um, our, our um, years of service is still done on paper for classified staff. So we have to go file by file and get their accurate number of years. So we wanted to capture this so we could pull, pull this together, but as we move forward and put the budget together, should you all be in favor of the, of us doing this, we will do this because we do want this to be for parapros and our classified staff and our maintenance people and and anyone. This is for our entire employee group. But just, our electronic data is, we only have that electronically for years of service for our teachers. So, um, but please, that is our largest employee group and the cost of, the additional cost for the other employee groups will not be, will not be as large. So, this is, the year one cost is the largest year, because as you can see, there are fifty-one teachers that have spent their entire career with Halifax County. So that is, I mean, that's, that's, you know, hats off to them. But this is where um, our current teaching force falls in the years of service that would be eligible right now for this supplement. So, um, and if you turn to the next page, kind of shows what it, that's what it would cost on a, on a more normal-looking year. So we recognize that the first year, first year you do anything, it's usually gonna have a, basically an upstart cost. But as you move forward, this would be a, a more reasonable, a place where we could find it through cost savings, federal funding, um, and and we could find it through uh, various sources to invest in our people in this way with these supplements. Because you can see that fifty-one is is a large number, but then the next year, the thirty-year teachers, we have only six that would come up that following year. And maybe a couple classified people, you know, a couple parapros, maybe a couple folks in maintenance, a couple in transportation. You would just have a few spotted um, throughout the division in other departments. So, and again, all employees will be part of this incentive supplement. Again, just a little more about the tuition reimbursement.
So you're saying, excuse me, but you're saying we're talking about possibly giving them this, including whatever we come up with, anything else like raises and all that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We are not, like, whatever the board votes on for, you know, percentage raise plus step or overall budget raise, that's, that's gonna be over here, because that's a year-to-year obligation.
On their fifth year, they gonna get this.
Absolutely. They're gonna get that e- every five years. You know, on that fifth year, they're gonna get that, this is just their longevity. Thank you for staying with Halifax. Now, hear me clearly, it's consecutive years. And I'm gonna get, I'm gonna get to that in a minute. It's consecutive years with the county. That's Stay With Us bonus. Okay. So, um, we we break out the specifics of tuition reimbursement. Again, we have a large number of teachers who are not licensed, and we need to work to get them licensed. And this, we compared this with what other divisions around us are doing. If you were on a provisional license, we know you have more classes to take. And so we're gonna um, try to supplement that somewhat. Where you can get reimbursed up to a thousand dollars a year, because we know that um, those classes, there are some that are more economical and some that are, that you can take online for, I know Longwood has some for ninety-nine dollars, okay, but you've got to take a lot of them. So you can get um, up to a thousand dollars a year. Um, if you just need to take a class, we're gonna give you, because you only need to take a class if you already are licensed, you need to take one class every ten years. So, we're gonna, you know, six hundred dollars. But if you want to take more, if you're working towards an advanced degree, still, you'll be eligible for tuition reimbursement of six hundred dollars. And again, there'll be some discernment in there, there'll be some flexibility if if there are special circumstances. It's not gonna be, you know, hard and fast. We will be, you know, absolutely willing to work with people. And again, just to be very clear, teachers, administrators, parapros, school counselors, specialist support staff, all, all the people, just want to be very clear, it is for all of our employee groups.
Got a question.
Yes.
Devil's advocate.
Uh-huh.
What if we give somebody something that ten years and they leave the level here?
Then that's on them, but if they, if they return, I'm gonna get to that slide in a few minutes.
Start out over, right?
They start at year one. Stay with us.
So we, we don't need to put up something in there that say, well, you gotta stay here for two or three years to continue getting this?
No. I mean, you get the bonus at year ten and then you, and your family moves and you move, then you move. But when you come back two years later, you start at year one, on the supplement. Now you'll get, you'll start in on your compensation, you will be in at your years of service. But just for your longevity, you would be on the, back at the
Year one.
Year one for your bonus year. So, okay. We are excited about this I Teach plan, because finally, we feel like one of the reasons why people are so hesitant about going through there and getting their license is they, they've just come out of school. And maybe they have a degree in something and they just can't incur any more debt. And that's just the fact. Student loan debt is a burden, and we all know that. And so, we are um, finding out and 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 signing an MOU with this, this group called I Teach that's spreading across the nation and and the Virginia Department of Education is, is really looking at this right now as a pathway to get teachers licensed within a year. And it's a series of modules that teachers can complete while they are teaching, and it makes perfect sense. It's essentially boots on the ground for teachers to complete while they're teaching. And so, um, you you know, we, we're like, okay, this would be a program, we'll pay for it. It's, it's thirty-three hundred dollars, we'll pay for it, but we will ask people to sign a two-year agreement. We'll pay for your modules, we'll pay for you to get licensed, but you will need to stay with us for an additional two years after, after we put you through that program. We'll get you licensed. Yes, sir.
Is that what all the schools are doing? Or that's just a two, you came up with that?
Um, that's what, we're all, they're, they are asking for an agreement. Yes.
I'm talking about give the number of years. I was thinking three.
I mean, that's negotiable, we can. Most people are, I mean, most people, just the cost, it, that equals out about the cost. So, I mean, you could, if that's, if that's the pleasure of the board, we can ask for three. But I, I, we thought two was reasonable based on a thirty-three hundred dollar cost.
It's thirty-three hundred a year though, right?
No, no, no. It's only a one year. It's only, it only takes them a year to do it. And so they would, it would take them, they're gonna work for us the year that they're doing it.
Right.
And then we're gonna ask them for two more. So essentially, it is three.
Okay. Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
About how many teachers do we have right now that have a provisional license? Do you know?
Well, the, we, we know, we know that there are fifty, that we were estimating about fifty. We have about seventy-five. But some of them are already in our SPED cohort that are getting that SPED degree. The, it, this is not approved yet for special education, so some of them will need to kind of support through maybe another SPED cohort. So really, we have about fifty that we say would qualify. So. And these are, these are the um, the critical needs area. Now, I will say this, the Virginia Department of Education is still vetting the I Teach for special education. Other states have adopted it, but Virginia is a little more critical in what it allows for um, certification for special education. So, um, they are, they're, I'm not saying that it won't happen by the time we get this thing stood up. Um, but right now, they're saying that they are not allowing I Teach for um, special education. So, okay. Dr. Bucklue? All right, you wanna, she's gonna tell you a little more about the SPED cohort.
So the SPED cohort is a wonderful opportunity for, we have currently ten teachers in the cohort. Um, and ESER is picking up the bill on this. Um, they will not only accomplish their licensure, but they're going to come out with a master's degree. So this is a wonderful opportunity that Longwood has partnered, partnered with us um, through um, allowing our students, and it's a one-year intensive program. So these ten teachers will have their SPED licensure and a master's in special education. Um, so we are uh, going, we have required, and they've all signed, a mi- a minimum of a three-year commitment after completion of the program, given that it is at a master's level. So that would be, they're in it right um, now. So this year plus three. So that's a four-year commitment, and we are already growing them uh, thanks to this program.
Question? Do you have an estimate on the costs for those ten teachers for this program?
Oh, yes. It is a total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's the total.
And that's included, you have to get, you get your masters too, right?
Ten people to get a master's degree for a hundred and seventy is not, that's not a, that's not a tremendous amount.
But you get the masters, you also get a boost then, plus you getting this.
Yeah, and they're gonna all get, yeah, they're all gonna get a boost. They're all gonna get a boost in pay when they're done. So it's a win for them and it's a win for us. So. Yeah. Yeah, this one's mine.
Um, just to, to talk again about the consecutive years of service. Um, we're gonna support folks, we, again, we want folks to come, stay with us, grow with us, but let's just be really clear. If, um, let's, I mean, I'll use myself as an example. I'm a thirty-one-year educator, but I've only been in Halifax for two years. So I won't, I wouldn't be eligible for um, a Stay With Us, Grow With Us bonus and for three more years. So I'm at year thirty-one on the, on the pay scale, but I won't get a, I wouldn't get a Stay With Us, Grow With Us bonus until three more years, until, that's when I would hit year five. And so, we're gonna, you know, that's, that's just the truth, because I've been in other, other school divisions. And so we're just, and and say, you know, somebody comes, and this is one of the concerns we had, somebody comes- had, somebody comes, and they work for us for, you know, they're here for their five year, and they get, they get their five-year bonus, and then the grass looks greener somewhere else, we wish, we wish you well, and go, go do what you need to do, but understand that, and we'll welcome you back, because life happens and things, people move, and we understand that. But, and we, and we want you to come back to us. But when you come back, you start again at year one, because the overall goal of this program is, we need people to come and stay and build longevity. So, we want to reward those people that do stay and grow. So, again, we just want to be real clear about that from coming out of the gate. So, Dr. Buckle's gonna talk about why this is so important and how it's gonna save us money in the long run.
So, reducing turnover cost is another part of our, our program. Currently, we do have a reasonably high turnover rate due to many factors. Across the nation, it's about eleven percent per school division of annual turnover. The Learning Policy Institute of America, this is what they do for a living. They really dig in, and they research, and they follow schools across the nation. And I was able to go into their calculator, and for our rural community in Halifax, this is their estimate. Now, you might say to yourself, how in the world is it costing that much in turnover? Well, there are many aspects to cost. It's not just hiring the new teacher, and usually, those are younger teachers that come in at a low pay rate. It isn't just that. You have so many levels of exit costs, recruitment costs, training costs, mentorship costs. They go through many pieces of the training, it can become highly involved. And in addition to that is your academic costs, which affect all of our community. So, what we want to do is make sure that we're focusing in on our recruitment, training, and mentoring, and the calculator is showing, by just reducing our percent, two percent down, we can save five hundred and twenty-two thousand on our, not in one year, it's over a course of time. So, but annually, we are looking at costs and working towards the reduction. So, this plan will also review the analysis on reducing. Next screen. So, in summary, our, and please remember, we're talking about the snapshot of teachers. Once we get our full figures, if we have your blessing to move forward with this, we will come back and give you a true cost. But for this snapshot cost, our anticipated additional cost for first year of implementation is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. That is from a makeup of the first-year implementation of teachers on their longevity steps or years of service, the license renewal estimates, the tuition reimbursement, we've put a fifty thousand dollar cap, and that's for the division, not per employee. It's fifty thousand for the division. I just want to make that clear. We're not paying for an entire degrees. And then the fingerprinting, and then adding sixty thousand to the professional development bucket. We do have a professional development budget line, and we want to add to that so that we can fully enrich our teachers and our support staff. So, that's, that is where we are getting the number. So, you can, you can, you can actually trace it back in your packet if you look through all of the figures. And I wanted to go ahead and put on there again, and I did this in our special meeting, some, some areas in which we can already look at savings is just by reducing materials and supplies by five percent, and reducing the purchased services by five percent next year. And that gives us a total of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, which really, it's not that difficult to reduce annually your, your material supplies and purchased services. It's just getting our efficiency study complete and seeing where we have waste and making sure that we discontinue waste. And we're also seeking out grants, I'm doing that as often as possible, and the grants may or may not cover our retention and our recruitment, they may cover other areas within our budget so that we can offset. So, and that is, that is blending all of our funding outlets to help with our plan.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to move that the board direct the superintendent to continue to explore this plan with the expectation of a more comprehensive report detailing all expenses prior to the start of the budget process.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? The shot will.
Where are we with the state's budget changes?
Okay. Well, I'll tell you this, at five fifteen today, as we were getting ready to come up for the board meeting, we got a memo that said the Calc tool, which is what we've been waiting for, just came in. So, Dr. Buckle feverishly got in, got into the Calc tool for about ten minutes today. So, that's where we are, and we are hoping to, if not at the special meeting for the high school, we're hoping to, we may have to have a second special meeting to bring you guys the, the last year's, the current budget to bring back for revision, because the new money is here, and it has come, and we're hoping to bring you guys some recommendations for that. But it literally, the new money, the new money calculations just came today. So, that's where we are.
And this program, we'd be looking at starting it in the fall of 2024.
Yeah, it would, we are asking, again, this motion, we're asking that it be, that we are allowed to build it as part of next year's budget, and it be part, that it begin with everyone's contract for next year.
And just one last question. The, the pay for school systems is different than most companies, where most companies are based off of performance. And we've had discussions in the past, how do we reward performance in a school system? Because you can't base pay off of that. Is there something that we can do for, like, Teacher of the Year, Staff Appreciation, Teacher or Staff Member, Maintenance Member of the Year to give a bonus each year? Is that something that could be?
We, we could do that, but, oh, we already, did we already give them a check? Yeah, we already give them a check.
They get, like, TV and stuff.
They already, what? They get, they already get a, they already get a check, like, one gets five hundred dollars, and then, what? And a TV. Get five hundred bucks and a TV.
Can we look at that and see if that needs to be adjusted and included on your summary of benefits as well?
I mean, we, we can, we can.
That's it for me, thank you.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yes, we were just talking about stuff.
Would this be something that, I know you said it would be built into the budget on a yearly basis. Will, will we ever get to a point where it'd be contingent if, if we don't have the money?
Oh, I hope not.
I'm just saying, if we don't have the money when the, or would this program be set in stone that you would continue this program, because you're building it into the budget, and you just had to eliminate somewhere else?
I would hope that it would be the decision of the, this board, every year, that this is something that, that is as important as a compensation plan, that it, it is part of, you know, that it is, because what I would hate to think, that someone is sitting at year twenty-nine, and all of a sudden, somebody, that this board does that, that is, I would, I would like for there to be some, some way to protect that, that this be written as it is protected, because that is, I mean, and, but I will, I will say this, I mean, there's a line in everybody's contract that said your, your salary is contingent on, I mean, everything we do is based on funds availability of funds, so, I mean, we, none of us have the crystal ball to protect it, but I would, I would like to see this become a protected priority, that we, that this board move forward, that this says, we value our employees, that this matters, because that's how tuition reimbursement got cut long, long ago, is when things got skinny, that was one of the first things. And the, what, the only way you're gonna get people to come back to education is to, is to remind them that you matter, and you as a professional matter, and we've got to start treating them as such. So, when you start cutting, when you start cutting the programs that support them first, then that message is, that's the wrong message. So, we've got to, we've got to make sure that, that these kind of programs are the protected ones.
Yeah, the thing that brought it to my attention was that, I know some of the stuff you got talking about was like grants, equipment, and all that stuff, you know, I do know the cost goes up every year. And so, if we're not able to get grants for, for equipment, security, and all of that stuff, I agree with you, that was cut years ago, and I think it should have stayed in place, and I'd like to see this stay in place.
Yeah.
But, you know, when you start penance, you know, people look for ways to cut, you know, personnel expense.
Well, with part of this coming out of Title II funding, that's federal funding, and that is usually steady. I mean, we haven't seen our title, Ms. Eaks, we haven't seen title funding cut, that's rarely, that's, that's hardly ever cut. And just, and if it, if this just becomes a protected program, what we're saying is, you know, we look for grants, you see, y'all see, since I've been here, we have looked and found grants for, for everything we can find, but regardless, if we just write this in as a line item in the operating budget, then we, that's, that's one way we just can protect it. But we have found that there is waste in our overall budget, and we're gonna continue to look for efficiencies. I mean, we're just committed to that, period, because that's how, that's the right way to do things.
I think that's why we also, teachers, staff, and board, because we cut these programs out.
Mm-hmm. I would agree, but until you start bringing them back, you know, you gotta, you gotta have something that makes people say, okay, they're sending a message that says you matter. You can't say you matter and then not show them something that says you matter.
I like it, I think it's thinking out of the box, I like it. It's a good, I think it's, I think it's good.
I think it's a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
District one is Friday.
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd.
Yes.
District three, Ms. Six.
Yes.
District four, Ms. Tanne.
Yes.
District five, Ms. Evans.
Yes.
District six, Ms. Shaw.
Yes.
District seven, Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
District eight, Mr. Fox.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you all, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Buckle.
And thank you to all our teachers and staff and all employees.
Absolutely.
Appreciate you.
Next is the special meeting for GMP number four, Mr. Mareska.
I know, it's time to.
What are you looking at, Vince? End of October? What, what are you looking at?
I'd say the week of the twenty-third, there'd be plenty of time.
Okay.
I know, I can't do the twenty-sixth, I'm out the twenty-sixth.
I can't do Friday. Monday, the twenty-third?
What is it? I'd rather do it Monday. Excuse me, sir?
The week of the twenty-third.
Excuse me.
No, no, just a day.
Any day, the week of the twenty-third.
So, you said no on Thursday and no on Friday?
I like Monday, it's kind of a customary day.
There's no school on Wednesday, so, I mean, there is, but there's not.
How about Monday?
Monday, the twenty-third, okay, everybody? What time?
Is it gonna start to be dark then now? Because it's
It will be.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a little dark here, you won't see nothing but dark.
It's dangerous.
We thought it was a cliff.
It's thirteen minutes dark.
What's convenient for you, Vince? Four o'clock, three, what will you need?
Whatever time.
Oh, three o'clock, we're moving over there with buses.
We're having buses, I feel.
You'll get to see it, it's fun.
Four o'clock, Monday, the twenty-third?
Four o'clock.
Everybody good with that?
Are we meeting at the high school? And then walking inside to continue the meeting, or?
Yeah, sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
At the high school?
At the high school, is that okay?
That's fine.
Tammy, can you help us set that up?
How much time for the tour?
You won't need much time right now, sir, you could pretty much, like, step on the high side, and you can see the entire site. There won't be as much walking the site until we actually pour some concrete and get some walls up.
Okay, Monday, October twenty-third, four o'clock at the high school.
Special meeting.
Is that, that good, everybody?
Everybody okay?
Yeah.
Don't need a vote on that, do we? Okay. All right, Vince?
All right.
Twenty-third, four.
So it shall be.
Be there with hard hats.
We gotta wear them, right? Absolutely.
Yeah.
It is a working job site. If you don't, if anybody forgets their PPE, we will have extra vests, hard hats, just make sure you have pants and clothes, no shoes.
Absolutely.
Don't forget, show up at the high school. Come here.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Have a good evening. Okay. Next is pay table for daily rates. Dr. Buckle.
Thank you again. This, this is, I'm asking for board approval on updating the daily and hourly rate for employees page for the pay table booklet that we keep online. Adding a line of long-term substitute retired unlicensed teacher, we have found that we do need to address this group of employees to help not only recruit them, but to compensate them appropriately. So, they will need to be a retired teacher, they would not have to have their license. So, we were asking for the approval of a hundred and eighty dollars per hour for this group of
Per day.
I'm sorry, per day. Let me, let me scratch that, it is per day. Sorry about that. That rolled. So sorry. Thank you. There is, so, and if you scroll down below the summer worker, that was already in, but the grouping below that, from curriculum development to program tutor, this is, this has come to light as we're in our all-in-plan rollout. We need to adjust our hourly rate for the group of people that you see listed here. So, I've added that for approval as well. And the bottom section under the blue line is anytime we are in need of an administrator substitute, and each of the classifications are there, they will need to be licensed for these daily rates. And I present that to you all for approval.
How much is that gonna cost us?
It will depend on how often we are utilizing these individuals.
It's not that much different from, it's, it's not that much different from where they are right now. It's, we have a few of them that say that they would come back, but they have let their license expire, they've been retired long enough to let their license expire, and if they would come back to us at a
So, we met it in the middle between what you get as a licensed teacher and what you, what we pay a standard, just somebody without a, without a teacher, without a teaching degree or has never taught. So, we felt, we felt like that was a nice compromise.
I would like to thank you for, for increasing that for the retired teachers. I mean, I do see a lot of value there, if you can bring that person in
That's right.
and fill the classrooms, as opposed to a person who doesn't have that experience. So, I, I want to thank you for looking at that, and I think that's a, a good change.
Do I hear a motion?
I move we approve the request.
Seconded by Mr. Potts, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Thank you very much.
Hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, right?
Apologize for that.
No problem. Thank you, Dr. Buckle.
Well, Mr. Chair, I move that pursuant to section two point two, thirty-seven, eleven of the Code of Virginia, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. Personnel, the appointment, resignation, salaries, um, of specific division employees is authorized by section two point two thirty-seven eleven, um, A one of the Code of Virginia. And disciplining specific students of the school division is authorized by section two point two thirty-seven eleven, A two of the Code of Virginia.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Motion's carried. Let's take ten minutes. Ten minutes?